Meeting to order, City of Palm Coast, City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October 17, 2017. It is 9:00 a.m. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shoot. Thank you. Technical difficulty? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Senator O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Great, thank you. We'll now open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comments on items that are not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number E1, which is approval of the minutes of the City Council. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Agenda Item Number F2, which is a proclamation recognizing disability month. Councilmember Clufus will be presenting. We have individuals that will be receiving it coming in.
No, they are coming. Are they here yet, Kim?
No. My youngest one, my oldest one.
Do you want to do the other one first?
They're on their way.
Do you know if they're going to be here soon?
They're around.
Okay.
Motion to move back one to the end of the proclamation.
Yeah.
Good job.
Agenda Item Number F3 is proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilmember Shipley will be presenting.
Whereas, Palm should be a place of warmth, unconditional tranquility and security. And for most of us, home and family can continue to count them home of greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, their homes is tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas, family violence is a crime that transcends race, religion, ethnicity, and economic stature. And one of its greatest tragedies is its effect on our children. And whereas, an estimated 4.8 million cases of domestic violence occur each year, and at its most tragic level, fills an average of more than three women every day nationally. And whereas, Family Life Center, the only certified domestic violence emergency shelter in sexual assaults of Flagler County, served 1,043 victims in the past year. And whereas, each October, the formal recognition of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month allows the community to acknowledge and show this award for the victims of this horrific crime. And whereas, Flagler County Advocates Alliance comprised of Flagler County Sheriff's Office, Victims Advocate, and the Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Advocate, and the State Attorney's Victim Advocate for the Seventh Judicial Servant Flagler and Family Life Center. And the Flagler County Sheriff's Domestic Violence Summit membership are committed to confront this crisis and are working together to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end domestic violence. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City of Palm Coast Mayor and City Council to hereby designate October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of Palm Coast to become part of the community response to end domestic violence and to send a message that this crime will not be tolerated in our community. As we spread awareness of domestic violence in our community during the month of October, we recognize that it takes an entire community to stand together and make a difference. Together, we can break the cycle and impact the lives of future generations. Signed this day, 17th October of 2017, City of Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland. Thank you so much. We truly appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Shipley. She's also a board member of Family Life Center. This is a community effort. This is not something that can be done alone. In Flagler County, there were 663 reported domestic violence cases in 2016. In a county of 105,000 people compared to St. John's County, who's only 25 minutes north of us, which is 220,000 people. They only have 135 minor cases that were reported. We're almost at the same level of county that is dealt with us. So this is a problem, and we need to combat it and work together, and we can only do it together. It's not just Family Life Center. It is Family Life Center. It is Flagler Beach U.D. It is FCSO. It is the community. It is the council. It is the mayor. It's everyone. We have to do this together. Everyone deserves the right to be safe. And the President of FCSA is going to say a few words. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michelle Pecicella, and I'm the Victim Services of the Flagler Beach Police Department, and I'm also the President of Flagler County Advocates Alliance. One year ago this month, prime victim advocates from four agencies came together to form the Flagler County Advocates Alliance. Victim advocates from Family Life Center, Flagler Beach Police Department, Flagler County Sheriff's Office, and the Seventh Circuit's Data Terms Office, all participated. We have only just begun our work, but already we are reaping the benefits. Pulling our resources and referrals, opening lines of communication, and developing community awareness projects are just a few examples of the positive and productive results. In return, we have enhanced direct services to qualified victims. Our mission is to provide effective advocacy through partnership, guidance, and awareness as we learn from the past, take action in the present, and look forward to the future. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
It should be. My legs are killing me after the race. Okay. Virginia, do you know if we're still going to wait?
Cindy's checking. I believe there was one set that has arrived.
I'll go ahead and move forward with the proclamation, 2017 Florida City Government Week. I'm going to be reading this as the League of Cities had requested that we recognize Government Week. And I want to take a moment to also recognize all of our hardworking employees that work on behalf of our community in the City of Palm Coast. So whereas, city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas, municipal government provides services for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas, city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public service and their benefits. Whereas, Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 29th, 2017 Florida City Government Week. Signed the 7th day of October 2017 by Mayor Melissa Holland. Will all of our employees please stand and be recognized? Thank you again.
Aren't you going to get them all up here for the picture?
We'll now move to Agenda Item Number F2, which is proclamation recognizing disability month.
Hi, good morning.
Hi, morning.
Morning.
Morning, guys. All right, how do we want to assemble? Is this okay?
Just y'all come, some of y'all come stand next to me up here. Bring them all around.
All right. We're here.
Mayor, council, guests. Okay. Whereas, Florida continues to foster economic growth through the development of a talented and diverse labor force, and the active and meaningful participation of individuals with disabilities as students, parents, employees, employers, and policymakers is essential to providing equal opportunity to all Floridians. And whereas, during the 2016-2017 school year, there were more than 300,000 students with disabilities enrolled in the K-12 education system, 20,000 students enrolled in the Florida College System, and more than 14,000 students enrolled in the State University System who have reported having a disability. And whereas, in 2016-2017, the Division of Career and Adult Education enrolled more than 8,000 adults with disabilities in adult general education and post-secondary career and technical education programs, and more than 10,000 students with disabilities in secondary career and technical, bless you, education programs. Bless you. And whereas, the Florida Division of Vocational Rehabilitation helps individuals with disabilities become part of America's workforce. And in 2016-2017, served 45,877 Floridians and assisted another 5,975 in finding or keeping jobs. And whereas, the Florida Division of Blind Services, DBS, is dedicated to ensuring that Floridians who are blind or visually impaired have the tools, support, and opportunity to achieve success. And in 2016-2017, DBS helped 854 individuals achieve successful employment outcomes, and another 10,614 received assistance to become more successful in school, community, and work. And whereas, in addition, the DBS Bureau of Business Enterprise is comprised of 122 managers, has employed over 225 Floridians generating taxable gross sales totaling more than $22 million, and the Braille and Talking Book Library served more than 31,000 active readers with disabilities. And whereas, it is important to continue encouraging individuals with disabilities to realize their abilities in their education, employment, and communities. And now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of October be officially designated Disability Employment Awareness Month, and call on all citizens of Palm Coast to celebrate the many contributions individuals with disabilities make to Florida, to our nation, and to the world. Signed this 17th day of October, 2017, Mayor Melissa Holland.
So thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor Holland, and everyone here, and community members. We really appreciate this. It's special. I mean, this is a very, very special day for all of us. What you see in front of you now is young people who are currently either employed. We have several young people in our group that have maintained and kept competitive employment. We have young people who are currently doing individualized vocational training within our school district, within the county, city parks, and Flagler Parks and Recreation. We work at Grace Food Pantry. We do rotations at public supermarkets. We also do individualized trainings in classrooms with custodial services and in food service. Really, we're everywhere. We are your next workforce, and we're so happy that you recognized us today.
Wow.
Last little piece I want you to know, the Trail Transition Program is Flagler County Schools 18-22 program for youth with disabilities who are seeking vocational training as well as independent living skills. To date, we've served 83 young people. And of those 83 young people, 54 of them have become connected to adult agencies like the ones that are part of the proclamation. 23 of these young people have been placed in individual vocational, volunteer, or adult services. And are you ready? 32 young people have maintained and earned competitive employment. So we're very happy. Thank you all, and I challenge you to reach out to businesses that are willing to look at young people with unique needs, to find them employment, to give them opportunities to train side by side with their employed peers. So thank you. Thank you very much for today.
Push as much as you can. Push, push, push.
Okay. I need to see everyone smiling face. And we're going to do a few, okay? One, two, three. One, two, three. Keep smiling. I'm going to do a divided one here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Congratulations.
Guys, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, guys, you're awesome. We'll go back through the room. Right through the room.
Fine, ma'am.
Okay. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number G5, which is a presentation of awards for the Senior Games Parade of Champions.
Brandon and Alex are going to handle this one?
Good morning. Last month, we hosted the Palm Coast and Flagler Beach Senior Games. We just wanted to recognize the individuals, particularly the local individuals that participated. We had golf, tennis, horseshoes, ballroom dancing, and pickleball. We had a couple other events, but due to the hurricane, we did have to cancel them. Of this, 40% of the individuals that participated were first-time registrants. 67% were from Flagler County, and also 51 individuals qualified from Flagler County in order to represent us at the Senior Games. That's taking place December. And then what we'll do is we'll just show you a brief video that we put on.
I'm 72, just turned 72. I don't see myself as a 72-year-old archer to say, well, I'm not physically capable of doing it. That's not an excuse anymore. I like to compete. I'm a diehard competitor, coming up. And I did the track, football, baseball, martial arts. You name it, I did it. I like to compete. You have to have something that keeps your interest. And with me, this sport became my hobby. I was immediately hooked. It's a competition sport, and it's like being in a race. The idea is to enjoy the sport because it is fun, and that's what it's for. We are getting prepared for the Senior Games. They put a lot of time in what they do as far as the organization of the Senior Games, period. You meet people, and because they're in your same age group, it's a lasting friendship. You look forward to coming out there, you know, to see people because you compete against them, and then, like I said, it's a friendship also. You allow people to be able to still enjoy sports that you did when you were younger, saying high school or college, even though they're coming of age to be a senior. Being active, you need to find something that you can do that's actually physical. My chiropractor, he sums it up in a very blunt way. You move or you die. So you guys sit around, you know, because they, ah, man, you know, I'm 50 this, 60 that. And I'm going like, so what? There's a class for you. Come on out and play. This is Jim Brown inviting you, the citizens of Palm Coast, to pick a sport and come out as spectator and enjoy our Senior Games. It may inspire you to pick up a bat, a ball, archery, and participate.
Colin McLeod, Flagler Beach, former 10-year resident of Palm Coast. Thank you for putting on the games, and don't forget to mention horseshoes because we're always looking for members. Thank you.
Al Hurley, Palm Coast. I just want to let everybody know that the Park and Recreation put on a fantastic sport event for the seniors. I participated in the tennis, and we had a pretty good turnout. But during the course of my traveling around, I end up at Holland's Park, and I saw so many people participating in the pickleball event. And even though I do not know them, but I talked to a few of them, and they were all very, very excited about the Senior Games. So for any seniors here in this room, I encourage them to participate in next year's Senior Game. It's a wonderful fair. It's not if you win or lose. It's just the fun of coming out there and enjoying yourself and meeting people. Thank you, Brandon, for doing a fantastic job as far as helping run into Senior Games. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Saris. I played in the women's doubles tennis after two knee replacements, one after three months, one after seven months. And it's a whole lot of fun out there playing tennis, but I want to warn you, it's very addicting.
Thank you.
We had an awesome team between Doug, Cindy, Jason, Tom, and the whole Parks and Recreation Department. We couldn't do it without them, so thank you guys as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number G6, which is a presentation of certificates to graduating students of the City of Palm Coast Citizens Academy class.
Mayor Holland is going to assist me along with Hannah Hussman, our intern in Public Relations. So I'm very excited to present to you the graduating class, the 42nd graduating class of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy. We have spent the last four weeks, actually, going to various city facilities and learning about city departments and city operations. We had one little glitch from the hurricane, and we are really going to go to Utility next week to the water treatment plant for Utility and Public Works. But we're going to go ahead and keep graduation today because that's what we had originally scheduled. So I'm going to call up each person. Mayor Holland's going to present your certificate, and then if you can just gather up here, and we'll do a group photo.
Perfect.
Okay. So Josie Aroneta, I think she may be absent. All right. And RJ Aroneta, her son, also, I think is absent. For the people who are missing, we'll present them next week at Utility. Kayanne Bartel. Some city business being conducted up here. Barbara Berkeley. Claudia Kennedy. David Cirxina. Susan Cirxina. Andrew Dodzik. Ruby Francis. And Norma Francis. Barbara Holly. Didn't see Mrs. Holly today. Barry Ivors. Yvonne Jukes. Gloria Kelly. Maria Martins. And Peter Martins.
Thank you very much.
Patricia McLaurin. I heard a rumor that she was on a cruise, which would make it kind of hard to be here. Raymond O'Connor. Bonnie Parker. Michelle Rankin. Millie Williams. And, last but not least, Ruby White. All right, well, I would like the council to come down. We're going to do a group photo. So what I need you all to do is make yourself into two rows. So tall people, toward the back, and... Should we stand on both sides?
Sure. I don't know how to do it, okay. No, squeeze a little.
Make sure Hannah can see your face.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right.
Okay. Thank you again. Hope you learned a lot, and now hopefully you'll take all your information and share it with your neighbors and encourage them to participate in future Citizens Academy. So we're very excited. Thank you. Agenda Item Number H seven is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is the second reading of a legislative matter. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order relating to pharmacy locations and medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities. Amending Section fourteen point zero-two of the Land Development Code to add definitions for pharmacy and medical marijuana treatment centers. And amending Section three point zero-three zero-two, Table three-four, to establish permitted zoning districts for pharmacies and medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities. This ordinance provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the second reading of this ordinance. You've been talking about this for quite a few months. What this does is basically brings our code up to date to meet the criteria the state has set out for medical marijuana dispensaries. They made it very clear that they were going to have most of the control, including semi what you can do with the zoning. And what they have indicated is it has to go the same place as you allow pharmacies. So that is what this ordinance does. It allows pharmacies in all of our commercial and office districts except for neighborhood commercial. So medical marijuana facilities would be allowed in the same area. Second reading, we feel like it's ready to go after you receive public input.
Councilmembers, any questions or comments before I open up to the public? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number H seven? Please do so at this time.
Jack, out of Palm Coast. First, the county commission put a ninety-day auditorium on their agenda. But I was reading in the papers where they're going to rehash that this marijuana law that they created back when. And I think, under those circumstances, to find out what they're going to, how they're going to work this thing out, I think it'd be a little wise if you cancel, you know, just put this off for a while until the Tallahassee decides what they're going to do. Because I know there's a lot of, people want it and people don't want it, so everything might change by the time you're ready to do anything. So I appreciate listening to your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next speaker. I'll close public comment. You know, Jack, to your point, it's my understanding in speaking with our legislative delegation that this will be brought up again, but it really has more to do, less to do with land use, but more to do with some of the mechanics that go along with what was passed. And as far as it, wanting it or not wanting it, the voters of Florida decided that this passed overwhelmingly, so that is not going to be a discussion through this legislative session if it's allowable or not allowable. We have had conversations if we were to ban them outright, which Tallahassee gave us the option to do. This council had chosen not to ban those outright, to allow them in our commercial corridors, not in our neighborhoods. This is what this ordinance allows for. And let me just say, if we stopped doing the business of the day every time Tallahassee tells us they're having a conversation, we would get nothing done. So I'm under the understanding that it's not going to change anything as far as where these are located or what they're supposed to be looked like as far as a pharmacy. They're going through the mechanics right now of licensing, how it goes through the Department of Health, and so those decisions will ultimately be made by them, but it doesn't change what we're doing today. So, but I thank you for your comments, and Tallahassee's always an interesting animal. So, leave it at that. Okay, council, any comments or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number H. Ordinance's first reading. Agenda Item Number Eight. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor. This is the first reading of a legislative matter. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast order providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast two thousand and thirty-five comprehensive plan as previously amended. This is pursuant to Section one sixty-three of the Florida statutes. This ordinance amends the future land use map or flume designation for one hundred acres, more or less, of certain real property from Flagler County future land use map designations of residential medium density, commercial low density, low intensity, excuse me, and conservation, to City of Palm Coast designations of residential, mixed use, and conservation as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance includes a note on the future land use map to limit residential development on the subject parcels to six hundred and fifteen dwelling units. This ordinance provides for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and an effective date.
Mayor, this is first reading. This and the next item, which is a companion zoning ordinance, is for property that was just recently annexed into the city on Colbert Lane. And as Jose will describe in more detail, this development has been approved by Flagler County when it was unincorporated, and this really just now brings it into those same standards. By state law, we have to provide for the same land uses as approved by the county, and Jose's going to give you the details on this project. Jose, take it from here.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Jose Papa with the Community Development Department. And again, we have a companion amendments here. One is for the comprehensive plan, and the other one is for the zoning map. Just to give you a background on the property, this property is about a hundred and nine plus or minus acres. It is located about fourteen hundred feet north of Colbert Lane. I'm sorry, this is Roberts Road. So about fourteen hundred feet north of Roberts Road is the property, on the east side of Colbert Lane. The property is currently vacant right now. And the purpose of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment, as Mr. Landon has stated, is that these amendments will basically provide the properties with the most equivalent city comprehensive plan and zoning map designations, which will protect the entitlements that have been approved for the property. As you can see, the current future land use map designation of the property is residential medium density. There's about three and a half acres of commercial low intensity, and there's some conservation designated properties on the site. As proposed, those designations will be changed to the city designation of residential, mixed use, and again, maintaining the conservation areas that have been designated on the site. The only difference here is that we will include an amendment, a policy within the future land use map that would limit the density of the property to six hundred and fifteen dwelling units. So breakdown, basically, you have ninety acres of residential, three and a half acres of commercial, and seventeen and a half acres of conservation. Typical with any comprehensive plan amendment, we do a comparison of the proposed and the current future land use map designation. And as you can see, the net change, which is at the bottom, there is really insignificant changes between the two designations. Some of the changes might just be based on the fact that we allow a higher floor area ratio within our commercial areas than the county did. But again, not a significant change between the two. Under the evaluation environmental factors, there's really no significant change in environmental impacts from the current flume to the proposed flume. And that's because the development area has already been spelled out within this development, and we're not looking to impact any additional areas that have not already been designated for development. Looking at the proposed land uses, very consistent with the surrounding property, again, the mixed use mainly on the Colbert Lane side. North of the subject property are rural low-density rural estate areas. Again, the conservation continues a conservation area to the north and takes into account its proximity to, really, a canal on the south side. And again, also on the south side, you have some mixed use high intensity. You do have some conservation areas west of Colbert Lane, but as stated, that is really separated from the subject property by Colbert Lane itself. So reviewing its consistency with our comprehensive plan policies, it's appropriate in that this is an area where you have available infrastructure. The location of the commercial and non-residential development is appropriate along Colbert Lane. Again, it promotes land use patterns that do not increase the cost of providing utilities since the utilities are available, and helps to improve the balance of land uses by providing that area of non-residential uses adjacent to the residential. So again, the findings, there's no significant impact on level of service for public infrastructure. There's no significant impact on environmental factors. It is consistent with the surrounding land uses and consistent with our comprehensive plan. So at this time, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board are recommending approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. And if approved by City Council today, typical with any large-scale future land use map amendment, this amendment will be transferred to the State Department of Environmental, Department of Economic Opportunity, and the other state agencies for their review. So the companion to this future land use map amendment is a zoning map amendment. The map on the left shows you the current zoning within that area. The subject property itself is designated as planned unit development. That's consistent with everything to the north and to the south. You do have Sea Ray here that serves, that's designated or zoned as industrial. This agriculture use might be unusual to find there, but that is a fine site. The Florida Inland Navigation District owns that parcel, and they use it for holding spoil when they dredge the intracoastal. So the proposed zoning map amendment will mainly change the planned unit development designation. In the city, we call it master plan development. And along with a master plan development, it does include a development agreement for the site. Within that development agreement, we will continue to maintain the approved entitlements and development standards that have been established for the property. So there really are no changes between what's been approved and what we're going to designate it and what's within the development agreement. Your development entitlements, summarized, includes a hundred fifty-four single-family units, four hundred sixty-one multifamily units, and about forty-five thousand seven hundred square feet of non-residential uses. The amenities proposed on the site include a stack house for boat storage, a marina, clubhouse, and other common areas for the residents. As established in the previous PUD, the development standards for residential use will remain the same, again, ranging from the single multifamily units. You do have a maximum building height of forty-five feet for single family and ninety-five feet for multifamily, which again, has been approved previously. Your setbacks will remain the same in all other, again, development standards. I'll just continue to emphasize that development standards will remain the same. And the same with our non-residential, the non-residential uses. The development standards will remain the same, allowable of about forty-five thousand seven hundred square feet of non-residential uses with a maximum building height of fifty feet, and the established setbacks which have been previously approved. So looking at its consistency with the surrounding uses, the designation itself is of master plan development, very consistent with planned unit development designation within the surrounding areas. Again, you just, you do have the industrial to the south, which is separated by an inlet or cut into the area, and of course, the agriculture to the north. The preservation areas are found to the west of Colbert Lane. But again, the preservation areas are separated from the proposed, from the subject property, again, by Colbert Lane itself. So looking at the criteria for a zoning map amendment, again, one consistency with the comprehensive plan is that, again, we have that policy that proposes to provide a diversity of housing stock within the city. This accomplishes that with the proposal to have multifamily dwellings within the development. Again, it's, the site does not cause significant financial liability or hardship to the city. It is proximate to the existing water and wastewater lines. There's no general threat to health, safety, and welfare. It does continue to have to comply with other local, state, and federal regulations and compatible with surrounding land uses. All those things are consistent, or the findings are that the potential uses on-site are compatible with surrounding land uses, and is subject to further development review. Does it accomplish a legitimate public purpose? Again, it's the opportunity to diversify the housing stock in the city and the opportunity, again, provided by the non-residential area to provide service uses, office retail to the adjacent residential areas. So at this time, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board are also recommending that City Council approve the proposed zoning map amendment from PUD or Planned Unit Development, which is the Flagler County designation, to Master Plan Development, which is the city designation, along with the attached development agreement, which establishes the standards and entitlements for the site. If approved today, we'll have a second public hearing along with the companion flume amendment. And if approved at second reading, you do have the final plan, which is already under review, and eventually a site plan would have to be brought in for the subject property. That concludes staff's presentation.
Councilmembers, any questions for staff at this time?
Maximum dwellings on that?
That's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question. Going back to the slide, the height of the multifamily seems extraordinarily high. So how do you determine compatibility? Can you compare that height to any other multifamily dwelling in Palm Coast that would be comparable to that?
Sure. Certainly, this height is higher than anything we permit. For example, our multifamily residential district two, multifamily residential district two, has a maximum height of sixty feet. But within some of our MPDs, like Town Center, we do have a maximum height of eighty feet for residential uses. And even at Palm Coast Park, which is on US one, the maximum height is eighty feet for that PUD. The ninety-five feet is in recognition that that's what's been approved by the county at this time.
So how many stories is that?
I believe what I further saw in detail is that it would be... was that it would be ground-level parking and then seven stories over ground-level parking. So that's a total of eight, and which is probably consistent that you probably need about 12 feet per story to.
So it reminds me of when you're going up to Marineland, right? And you see this huge condo canyon that was approved many years ago by the county, and it sticks out. It doesn't even seem to be compatible with anything up in that area. So I understand we've gone through an approval process through the county. So I guess also my question is, knowing that these are coming in, and maybe I'll pose this question to Mr. Landon, is have we ever sat down with the county, knowing, because we have another development that will be coming to us for annexation, and that's south of this development order? Have we ever just sat down to say, you know, we are looking for some consistency throughout Colbert Lane? Can we have a conversation about some of the plans? Or do we have that ability to know that we have these pre-annexation agreements, right, for water? We know they're coming. Has there ever been a time where we've sat down to say, you know, nine stories seems a little high for us? I don't think it's something that we would necessarily look to approve. Has that ever occurred?
Yes, it has. It's been, it's been a while. It's been a few years because, you know, development is now picking up. But when development was going gangbusters a few years ago is when we were having those conversations. Be happy to have a planning office and the city manager, county administrator having a conversation about what our standards are, knowing what areas we do annex, you know, the areas that they want water and sewer, and see if they aren't willing to try to match those standards versus having the developer actually get their entitlements at the county and then come into the city.
So what would we change that from 95 to 80?
Well, in this case, the only way this can be changed is if the property owner agrees to it.
Why?
It would be from the future is, you know, basically, it would be our zoning, standard zoning criteria. And then if we had a master plan development, then city council could decide if they want to do any different standards because of that given area. You know, downtown, you know, having an 80-foot building downtown, I mean, that's what your downtowns are supposed to have. This out on the intercoastal is where I think you start getting into those questions. So what we would ask them to do is meet our standard criteria we have in our zoning code and not have PUDs to-
For future?
In the future.
What is Canopy Walk? Is that five, six stories?
You get six stories, five or six stories. So it's-
I'm just trying to get a comparable when I'm visualizing what this would look like.
There really isn't in our-
It's what?
In Flagler County, there really isn't that I can think of.
This averages out to seven dwellings per acre if you take the whole project and figure out density. Pretty high, but just keep it in mind for how we judge the next ones, I guess.
Yeah, again, I just know that the Marina project down, I believe it's Mr. Collis's project, will be coming in when he's done getting development rights, I'm assuming. Is that how this is working?
That property before Mr. Collis owned it also has these mid-rise type stories already approved. Once again, back before the bust, a lot of these were being approved at that time.
I mean, so, you know, we're talking, we still have Palm Coast standards built in as far as the developments overall.
Architectural standards, those type of things, yes. But when it comes to the actual property rights, if you will, then they are embedded in the property.
It seems extraordinarily high. I, that is, I don't know. It's just a little bit concerning, so.
I understand.
Okay. Well, thank you. So now we'll open it up to a presentation from the applicant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. I'm the civil engineer and landscape architect on the project. Dennis Baer is our land use attorney, and he's doing some missionary work in Africa, so I'm kind of standing in for that. We're excited about coming into Palm Coast. My office actually designed this project over 10 years ago. Same developer did Palm Coast Plantation. I was also involved in the Sea Ray parking lot a little while back. So the comment about the height of these buildings, going to be a single parking garage with seven stories on top of it. And at the time we did it, it was a good transition between kind of the heavy industrial of Sea Ray and Palm Coast Plantation. So we're excited about getting underway. We're going to be hopefully recording the final plat by the end of the year and under construction in January. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions or comments?
I have one. The Palm Coast Plantation residents, were they were seemingly okay with this development happening on Colbert?
Actually, when we went through the county process, probably six months ago or so, this zoning was on this property and the height and everything for 10 years. So we modified the residential part of it from canal lots to the single-family layout you guys see. But we didn't touch the half of the project that was next to the residence. There were a few ladies that came and spoke, and they were opposed to anything but single-family. But at that point, we already had the zoning. And like Mr. Landon said, you know, we did quite a few of these back then. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up to the public for public comment on agenda item number I eight.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Nets, Palm Coast resident and chairman of the Florida Inland Navigation District. It was several months ago that I came before city council and talked about a problem that FINE has observed throughout the length of the intracoastal waterway, and that is the gradual diminution of commercial access. FINE did a survey of the entire Flagler County waterways, came up with a series of potential commercial access, and that has been presented both to the city and to the county. I would again remind you that as we take up more and more waterfront property for development, we reduce the opportunities for commercial access. By commercial access, I mean dredging companies and marine contractors. What we're doing, in essence, throughout the intracoastal waterway from Nassau County to Miami Dade is we are gradually excluding unintentionally commercial access, which means the cost of commercial access. Marine contractors, dock builders, so on and so forth, is going to rise exponentially. I'm not suggesting any changes to this project, but I would ask council to consider that as you move forward, be sure you're making room for commercial access. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Having been at that county commissioners' meeting concerning this project several months ago, let me just say there were more than just a few ladies complaining about the height of the building. Imagine the people living in Flagler County, some who thought they had done their due diligence knowing there was a planned development there. To their surprise, finding there's going to be in their backyard, and they say there's going to be a buffer, 25, 30 feet, whatever it is, between that property and the people's backyard. If all of a sudden you wake up one day and you look out your backyard and you're looking up at an eight-story building, this is probably, can't be changed for this project. But as you mentioned, Mayor, I think this is something we should seriously look at going forward. This is not really, in the history of Palm Coast, going this high. Had this high-rise been put on the Colbert Lane side and the residential more towards the east, I think there would have been a lot more complaints because everybody's going to say, oh, you know, you're not close enough, you're too far, or whatever it might be. I don't know if you can get into negotiations with this developer and say, gee, maybe can we scale it down one or two stories? Probably not. But again, don't know, with all the people that were complaining that lived in Flagler Beach about this, whether there will be any lawsuits going forward. There were many, many irate people about this and about the height of the building, and rightfully so. Like I said, if that occurred in your backyard, all of a sudden you wake up one day and somebody on the seventh floor is watching you when you're swimming pool, it can be a little unnerving. So, you know, just for future use, please keep that-
Back to this council. Any questions, comments? Now I'll undertake a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I nine. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the companion rezoning to the last item. This is a quasi-judicial matter. And the title is, "An ordinance of the city council, the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. Amending the zoning designation for approximately 109 acres, more or less, from Flagler County designation of planned unit development, or PUD, to the city of Palm Coast master plan development, or MPD, with a development agreement which is attached as Exhibit C." The subject property is more particularly described in Exhibit A and graphically depicted in Exhibit B to the ordinance, which provides for conflict severability and provides for an effective date. Mayor Council has indicated this is quasi-judicial. So if there have been any ex parte communications on this matter prior to this public reading, those should be disclosed at this time.
Any ex parte? None?
Mayor, this is the zoning companion we already went over. We have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments, council members? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I nine? Please do so at this time. Tena, I'll close public comments. I just want to really reiterate what George had stated. I think we just really need to set a plan for us to sit down with the county as much as possible. And if there's any way we can minimize these in the future, that would, I think, make a lot of sense.
We agree.
All right. Okay. Council members, I will undertake a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number I ten. Ordinance, Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, again, first reading of a quasi-judicial matter. This is an ordinance of the city council, the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for 6.2 acres, more or less, of certain real property described as part of parcel tax ID number 271030 for 0010100010. And is generally located on the south side of Matanzas Woods Parkway, extending between the new alignment of Belter Parkway and the old alignment of Belter Parkway, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A to the ordinance. From, and the rezoning is from public and semi-public or PSP zoning district to neighborhood commercial or COM 1 zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, for severability, and for an effective date. Mayor Council, this is quasi-judicial. So if there have been any ex parte communications on this matter prior to this public hearing, those should be disclosed at this time.
Any? None?
Mayor, city council, this is a rezoning, parcel along Matanzas Woods Parkway. Bill will give you the details.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and publicly. I'm Bill Hoover from the Planning Division of Community Development.
The silence is killing us, Bill.
That's not the project. Thank you. Site 6.2 acres, located on the south side of Matanzas Woods Parkway. And it's located between the old and new alignments of Belter Parkway. And the Palm Coast United Methodist Church purchased the property back in 1999 from ITT. Currently, they have about 22 acres, and they own the property between the two alignments down here to Buffalo Bill Drive. And the church recently prepared a master plan. And they found that the 6.2 acres of land is excess to the future needs of the church. And so the church is proposing to rezone 6.2 acres. That's about 700 feet of frontage along Matanzas Woods Parkway, about 380 feet of depth. They want to change this from public, semi-public, to neighborhood commercial or COM 1. If the rezoning is successful, the church desires to sell the property to a commercial developer and use the proceeds to move from the current church facility that's located on Belter, about four miles south here across from the public library. And then they would, you can see that they've also got a few recreational facilities in a stormwater lake on this site. So north, northeast of the lake is where the church facilities would be going. The future land use map designates this mixed use. And it allows a variety of zoning districts in this use, including things like light industrial, high-intensity commercial, COM 2, and COM 1, as well as multifamily. The current zoning is on the left. And you can see the public, semi-public, goes down to Buffalo Bill Drive. Directly to the west is the Palm Coast Park DRI. And adjacent to the site, that land use right there is designated, there's about two acres designated COM 2. To the northwest of the site is land designated duplex residential. And to the north and east are lands, yellow is zoned RSF 3, and the orange is RSF 2. So we got single family both to the north and to the east. The applicant notified the neighbors by U.S. mail of a neighborhood meeting back on August 14. It was held on August 30 at Belter Elementary. About 40 people attended, including about 25 church members. After the planning board, staff received a petition from about 25, I'm sorry, 35 neighbors opposing the project. And at the neighborhood meeting, the applicant provided a summary of comments and concerns from the neighbors. Some of those included commercial access onto Old Belter. Would a gas station be constructed? Widening of Matanzas Woods Parkway, which will happen here sometime in the future. And also noise from the project, crime, safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. And staff, as we did our detailed analysis, and it was about the same time they were holding this neighborhood information meeting, we found some of the uses were the originally applied for a COM 2 zoning that we weren't very comfortable with if, when we put ourselves in the position, hey, if we live in the neighborhood, what do we feel would be appropriate? But some of those things included motorcycle dealership, fast food restaurant, a drinking establishment, which probably wouldn't happen with the church going there, and they'd probably put deed restrictions on that. But a hotel motel, and, you know, it could go four stories high there. So additionally, maybe a convenience store at New Belter in Matanzas Woods Parkway. With, some of those new convenience stores have 16 to 24 fuel pumps, usually take a two-acre site. So we met with the applicant, Larry Torino, about the neighbors' concerns and our concerns. Mr. Torino said the church was actually planning on putting deed restrictions on the uses that staff was having a problem with and the neighbors were having a problem with. But those don't really hold up for what we're doing here. So Mr. Torino dropped the church's request to neighborhood commercial. And all those land uses that staff mentioned now go away because they're not allowed- land uses that staff mentioned now go away because they're not allowed in the COM1. And staff based their analysis on five criteria in the Land Development Code of Chapter Two. The proposed development must not be in conflict with or contrary to the public interest. In staff's opinion, the proposed neighborhood commercial will be compatible with Matanzas Woods and Indian Trails neighborhoods. B, proposed development must be consistent with the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan. Staff found it met all standards of the Land Development Code and would actually shorten trips for residents that they would have to travel to neighborhood commercial. Right now, the, if you're living at where the project is, you'd have to travel about three miles to the southeast, or about four miles straight south to Belter to get a loaf of bread, let's say, at Publix. Criteria C, the proposed development must not impose a significant financial liability or hardship for the city. And the project's traffic will impact Matanzas Woods Parkway nearby the site, but it will not attract a large number of motorists traveling on I-95 since the COM2 has been dropped. So it's, would mainly be a project that would serve residents either living somewhere southwest of here that want to get on the interstate off of Matanzas, or generally live in one of those two neighborhoods. Criteria D, the proposed development must not create an unreasonable hazard, nuisance, or threat to the health, welfare, or safety of the city's inhabitants. The mixed use designation on the flume does allow COM1, and in staff's opinion, it would be compatible, so there would not be a hazard. Criteria E, the proposed development must comply with all other applicable laws, statutes, and ordinances. And as it goes through the process, whoever the developer is, they would be required to meet the Land Development Code, COM Plan, and other jurisdictional agencies. Planning staff and the planning board recommend approval to City Council to rezone the 6.2 acres from public, semi-public, to neighborhood commercial for application number 3399, Palm Coast United Methodist Church rezoning.
Okay. Now, open it up unless anyone has any questions for Vice Mayor Novile.
What would we be looking at at COM1?
I think maybe a good example of COM1 might be St. Joe Plaza. And a hardware store is allowed. And so a lot of things that you get there, insurance agencies, real estate offices, mom and pops, small, let's say, delis, sit-down restaurants are allowed. And, let's see, you can also have a bank, but the drive-throughs are limited. So the types of uses there, and I'm sure you'll get a pizza place, too, since we're short on those. So it's the kind of use that you might expect close to a neighborhood. If you wanted to do a convenience store with gas pumps, those are not allowed if you're within 500 feet of residential. So let's say you wanted to put one in at the southeast corner of New Belter and Matanzas Woods, where the traffic light is. They would have to come in and apply for a special exception, and then that would go to a public hearing in front of the planning board.
Okay. That's all that means.
And then it would be limited to eight gas pumps.
Okay.
One other question, Bill. You talked about the COM2 down to COM1 eliminating what the staff and some residents saw as a potential problem with drawing traffic off of I-95 to these businesses. Would the city have any control over whether the state of Florida puts an informational sign out at the Matanzas Woods interchange that there's a restaurant located at whatever, you know, within a mile of whatever this interchange number is? It's three something, I can't remember, 290?
I would say the city wouldn't have any.
I can answer that. The answer is no.
Well, I mean, that was a rhetorical question, but I just thought for, I mean, if we're concerned about traffic, I don't see that as being a huge factor. But, I mean, if I had a restaurant on this site, I'd probably like it if the state of Florida put a sign out on I-95 saying there was a restaurant here.
Yeah, that whole blue sign, directional signage program is something the state FDOT manages, and they don't, you know, contact us regarding that.
Okay.
And even if they did, we, I mean, you can't say, well, we decide your business. You can't have a sign out there. You're not going to be able to limit that just because of location.
Well, the fact that there's no gas station will probably limit that, too, anyway. I mean, you'll have the restaurant, but most people coming off 95 are looking to get gas, something to eat, and the whole.
You will, though. I mean, Matanzas with the interchange now is one of our hotspots a lot of people are looking at.
Just getting off. Just like, hey, let's see what this is.
Well, can you tell me, did we have a meeting with the residents when it was COM2, or when it was going to be COM1?
When the meeting was held with the residents, it was in, I believe that's when that petition went out, but it was COM2. And the petition does say something about COM2. So the, when it went to the planning board, there was a couple people that were concerned about the zoning. And we did explain that at the planning board, that they since had dropped the rezoning request to COM1.
Have we thought about having another meeting now that it's COM1 to let them know it's changed and see how they feel about that?
No, there was, there's not been a second meeting on that.
Okay. Can I open up to the applicant to do a presentation at this time?
Good morning. For the record, my name is Larry Torino. My position here with Palm Coast United Methodist Church is that of the chairman of the North Campus Planning Committee. And I can say it's something that I didn't really have much of a choice about. But I was appointed, and I'm here. And I do say I feel a little bit strange standing, making a presentation as opposed to sitting, but that's something we have to adapt to as well. I did have a presentation, and frankly, a lot of it is repetitive. And rather than take up the time of redundancy, I'd like to address a couple of the concerns that the council has made. One of which is a restaurant on this location. We really don't have any knowledge or control over that. Our interest at that time, or at this time, is to make the property available for use that would benefit not only the church, but the community as well. And that being said, Bill, Mr. Hoover, if you don't mind, can you go to slide, I believe it's slide three?
There's, you've got two slides, but there's nothing. That's still showing mine on here. Racer technology. Start of my life. Looks like they put wine on there twice.
Okay. This slide here basically says it all as to why we determined the six acres to be unneeded because we did a need analysis and to determine what would be in the best interest, like I said earlier, for both the church and for the neighborhood. We did hire a professional appraisal, or appraiser, to do an appraisal on the property. We looked at the respective land uses, and they came back to us and indicated that the highest and best use was commercial. Again, they looked at both residential and non-residential uses. That being said, what I have here on the screen shows a one-mile radius of the target site, which is the red circle with the white boundary around it. Within this area, I estimated through the property appraiser's website, I didn't do it through Census Trax, but through property appraisers, the number of property owners. And there were approximately 2,980 property owners. I took a percentage of that, and this isn't rocket scientist-type work, but just to get a general idea. And within that one-mile radius, I'm estimating now that there's approximately 4,800 residence bodies, people. Where the maximum estimated that if that area was built out, it would hold approximately 7,300 residents. Also on the screen, it shows you a distance from Palm Coast Parkway to the property, which is approximately four miles. And if you look at the north end of the circle, there are additional residential, I should say, residential uses north of that site. Within that entire radius, there's no commercial, there's no retail services, there's no neighborhood services available to the residents. That area with the population, given that it is, is in fact a neighborhood in and of itself. And in conjunction with that, some of the basic urban planning principles that we applied to this entire analysis, look at some of the basic unit planning principles that are utilized when you go into community development, and the neighborhood being the basic unit that you are working with. And one of them is to place arterial streets along the perimeter. If you look at Matanzas Parkway, east-west, you look at Belter Parkway, north-south, you do have your primary arterial streets placed at the perimeter. This neighborhood site is not located wholly within a given neighborhood unit as is, I would say, if you're familiar with the commercial zoning on Palm Harbor Parkway. Also, another neighborhood, and I believe it's COM2, which is on Pine Lakes Boulevard, which was a rather contentious issue at the time it was being developed. But I believe now, since it's been in existence for some time, has proven to not be a nuisance, but a welcome commodity to the neighborhood. Another factor we look at is the design of the internal streets. Does this impact any of the internal neighborhood, traffic-wise or otherwise? Given its location, it doesn't. One of the other principles, which really isn't that relevant to this, but typically in the center of a neighborhood, you would have the school, or an elementary school, as the primary center of attraction. And one of the other elements is to restrict local shopping areas to the perimeter of the neighborhood area. And, I mean, this site fits that particular element very, very well. Obviously, there, you would like your neighborhood commercial centers to be proximate to residential uses. This is. This not, this does not adjoin or abut residential development, much like other commercial areas in the city. It is separated by Matanzas Parkway. It is separated by Old Belter Parkway. Both of those right-ofways measured 124 feet in width. Matanzas will be a primary artery. Those residents that live along the Old Belter alignment have actually the benefit of having that, what was, was, what once was a primary thoroughfare being relegated now basically to a residential street, yet they have the benefit of a right-ofway that is approximately, I would say, by numbers, 40, 50 yards wide. That being said, the purpose of this opportunity here is for rezoning to gain a win-win situation, both for the church, to enable it to move forward with building a new campus, and secondly, to provide the residents of that community, that area of northern Palm Coast, with some more convenient shopping opportunities and retail opportunities. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant at this time, council members? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number I D? Please do so at this time.
Hey, my name is Katrina Kryachin. I've been living here since 2011. When we bought the property, which is right around the corner, like, it's seriously like in our backyard, the lot they're talking about, we liked the area because it was quiet. And at the time, I was pregnant with our first child. The idea of having, even just the smallest potential, having something like a gas station there, is not something I am comfortable with. The whole reason we purchased that house was because there wasn't anything like that there. And there are a lot of things I don't like about it, like the fact that that intersection, people, no, excuse my language, people drive like friggin idiots in that intersection. They run through it quite often, they don't pay attention to what they're doing, and we have kids over there that walk home from school. And there's no guarantee that whatever you put in there, people are going to pay better attention to what's going on around them. I've been hit by a car as a pedestrian. It's not fun, you know? And then, I know they mentioned needing a special permit for a gas station, but that's still a possibility for that location. And if that happens, I'm actually going to have to move. I'm going to have to sell my house and move because I cannot live near something like that because of my asthma. I will be constantly in the hospital. It could potentially kill me, is that bad? That's another reason why we moved to Palm Coast in general, is because of my asthma. Not to mention that, you know, if there is a gas station, well, if there's a leak where the gas leaks into the ground and makes the water completely undrinkable. There's also been cases of increased birth defects and childhood cancer living near a gas station. That's not something I'm comfortable with, especially having two young kids. It's, I'm just not cool with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Tina, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council. No further questions? If you want to address the speaker as far as what would be located there?
Yeah, the convenience store with gas pumps would have to go back to the planning board for review and potential approval. However, gas pumps, the tanks themselves have double linings now, and the stations that were leaking are things from 30 to 50 years ago. So it's almost uncommon to hear of a newer convenience store with gas pumps having a problem leaking fuel into the environment.
Okay. If nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, one more question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Bill, we got Belter and the Old Belter. Could there potentially be exits on Old Belter into and out of that property?
The, you get potential for three access points. You could potentially have, you could potentially have one on the Matanzas, perhaps in the center of the site. That might only be a right-in, right-out. You could also have a access probably at the southwest corner of the subject property, and possibly at the southeast corner of the subject property. So that's your three potential there.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number J11, which is a resolution approving a contract with SIG and ONBACH Incorporated for Stormwater Drainage System Improvement. Mr. Lando.
Mayor, City Council, this is our annual WEAR project. The thing that's unique about this one is it actually includes three WEARS. Normally, we do one a year. The reason why we are able to do three this year is because we have a grant from the St. John's River Water Management District. And they are actually giving us a grant to pay for two out of the. And they are actually giving us a grant to pay for two out of the three weirs. So all of this is in the budget, and timely with all the rain we've been having, to say the least. Even the rain we had last night has quite an impact on our system. So with that, Mike is going to give you the details.
Speaking of rain, a fun fact is, we've received at least 60 inches of rain this year. We normally get 52. Half of that, 30 inches, we've received since the 1st of September. So not only are we experiencing more rainfall than usual, we're also experiencing a higher intensity, which has really taxed our stormwater system to the maximum. In fact, I'm sure that if we didn't have some of these modern facilities already constructed, we'd be in a lot worse shape. But we're here to discuss the L1, K1, and the W1 Surface Water Control Structure Reconstruction. I wish I had sexier names for them, but that's what we know them as, and that's the way it is. First of all, we have K1 and L1, which is south of the city, just off of Sesame Boulevard. L1 is on the Little Waterway, and we put these both out for bid because they're close proximity. We also applied for a grant, too, from the St. John's River Water Management District, figuring that since they're so close together, we could do them as one project. L1 is on the Little Waterway, which essentially drains underneath 95, across the old county waste management facility underneath Oak Kings Road, and forms the headwaters of the Bulo Creek. K1 actually drains, they're separated, there's a ditch block right here, so even though the canal looks like they're all together, they're not really. K1 drains underneath 95, through Eagle Lake subdivision, or on the side of the Eagle Lake subdivision, over to Oak Kings Road, and drains out to the Tamoka Basin. L1 is on, like I said, the Little Waterway. It's behind some city property that we purchased a year or so ago, so we would have access to it. This is what L1 currently, well, it doesn't currently look like it's right now because it's underwater right now, but this is what it looks like when there's no water in it. K1 is down off September Place. It's a city-owned property we have access to, that we purchased some time ago, I'm not sure exactly when. And it controls the water in the Corona Canal, which flows out east under 95 and Oak Kings Road, out to Tamoka Basin. And this is what K1 currently looks like in drier conditions right now. I'm sure it's underwater as well. Since K1 and L1 are both very similar, same dimensions essentially, I think L1's a little bit higher than K1, we're essentially using the same plans for both projects. W1 is a different matter entirely. W1 is a concrete box inlet on the west side of Beltair Parkway, across from Buddy Taylor Middle School. It's something new that we're doing, that the next two structures we construct after this one will probably be very similar to it. And this is what it currently looks like. Some of the boards have been removed. The normal water level is about right here. But we've lowered the boards, and we've kept them lowered since the 1st of September, due to all the rain we have received. And when we get finished with W1, this is what it will look like. We'll replace the wooden stoplogs with a concrete filler, put one of our automatic gates on it that we can control from, computer, cellphone, wherever, so we can control the water flow through W1. Rather than take out the entire structure, we're just going to demolish some of the concrete, rearrange it a little bit, put it back together. Since 2009, we've got 35 water control structures. Nineteen of those have been replaced or rehabilitated. We have 16 minor ones remaining, which don't have near the complexity or sophistication of the ones we've been doing. When these three are done, when L1, K1, and W1 are done, we only have two major structures remaining, and those are both more or less part of a large road-crossing projects. This is a copy of the fiscal year 2018 approved budget, showing W1, L1, and K1 approved for this budget year. We had four pre-qualified bidders. SIG and Anbaxure Incorporated from Deland, Florida, was a winning bidder at $807,500. SE Klein Construction, though they were close, local bid preference didn't come into effect. SE Klein had $853,868.50. Petty Coach Schmidt, $1.2 million. Brothers Construction, near $1.4 million. So SIG and Anbaxure was selected as the lowest and best bidder. This is how it breaks down. K1 weir budget line item was 385. Same with L1. W1, we budget 220. Total budget's $990,000. Winning bid is $807,500. With a 10% contingency, that brings it $88,250. And we have a St. John's River Water Management Cost Share Grant that's going to pay us back between $618,500 to $700,000. Expected notice to proceed will be November, December. That gives us time to order the equipment we need to construct the weirs. They'll mobilize for construction January, February sometime. Substantial completion for the grant is 270 days, so we expect substantial completion to be around July, August, with final completion around September, October next year. Just a little bragging, this is BS-2 on Barrington Waterway, which we just finished. This is a previous cost share we did with St. John's River Water Management District, and this one cost us right around $360,000. Next step, approve a contract with SIG and Anbaxure for the reconstruction of K1, L1, and W1 for the amount of $888,250. Any additional questions?
Any questions, council members?
Just have a comment, mayor. Maybe a question from Mr. Landon. We discussed, I guess, last big, close bid about going back and revisiting our policy on local. Do you remember that?
Yes, we did that recently, when we did the purchasing.
Yeah.
And we increased it. We doubled it. It was, I think the limit was $10,000 before, and we doubled it to $20,000.
Okay. All right. That's all I got.
Just have a question. I was just going to ask, what type of vulnerability does a project like this have if during construction, we exhibit the same type of rain behavior we've seen recently? Is that potentially a huge issue? Or, because I saw 270 days for completion, is this something where if we had substantial rainfall, that this could be drawn out further or put it in jeopardy?
I would say that, given the unprecedented rainfall that we have received, that would probably fall under unforeseen circumstances. Typically, we plan on doing all of our waterway construction between the months of January and June, so that's our driest part of the year, and we've been very successful in doing that.
Awesome. Thank you.
But, you know, the fact of it is, anytime, when you're in a canal or any waterway, and you get the kind of heavy rains we've received, yeah, it's going to impact the project. They will have to recover from that, and...
I wasn't sure if you put, with the precedent of what's going on, whether you try to, some type of temporary barriers further upstream to...
All of these will have those barriers. They call them pylons.
Coffer dams.
So that they can work in the dry. The heavy rains, the fear is that it would actually go over those or somehow breach those. And also, as Mike said, though, the timing of this is such, and that's why you see the notice proceed and all that, is to try to have this work done during our dry season. So, you know, it can't rain this hard forever. It will dry out again, and hopefully that will be the case.
We can typically build one of these weirs in about 60 days if everything's delivered on time, you know? And we've seldom had construction projects in our canals succeed, go past June. Generally, by hurricane season, tropical storm weather, we're set, ready to go.
And this is coming out of our stormwater fund?
Yes, ma'am.
And what does that do to our fund after these are constructed?
Each year, you know, Mayor, as you know, and we've been talking about that, that's the one fund that is very tight each year. But each year, it includes a weir project, so this is actually pretty typical. Once again, the grants were something that the Water Management District has been adding here lately. We got the one last year, and then one here for two of these, so not all of it's coming out of our local dollars. It's also coming out of state dollars.
And so, the recent construction of the one over Barrington, or the rehab of the one at Barrington, during our extraordinary rain events, and coupled with a hurricane, did you notice anything in that area of the community having that constructed that at least attempted to remedy some of the major flooding issues we've seen?
I went by just after Irma and talked to some of the local residents, and they said it was great. Said where they used to have a river running down their street, it was a lot better. Now, the sucker punch that came afterwards affected it greatly, but we hadn't had a chance to de-water everything as much as we did during Irma. We've been filled up three or four times since Hurricane Irma, just from the rain. The gates are wide open right now.
Sucker punch was a name storm that we got at the end of September, early October, that actually brought more rain than Irma did. And as Mike was saying, we've actually got complaints because we've lowered the canals lower than normal. But that's because the whole system is so wet that even the two, three inches we got last night impacts us more than normal. And so, we were trying to make sure the canals have additional capacity available for them. So we're going to keep the canals low until we quit getting all this rain, till, not just the canals are low, but we've got to get swells and ditches and groundwater, the water table low, too.
The two inches of rain we received last night raised the Royal Palms Canal a foot and a half. So there's no place for the water to go. It just runs off. There's no more ponding available. It just runs off into the canals.
So that's why we're keeping them low. We are not, but Mayor, to your point, is with these new weirs, we can lower the gates lower, we can control a lot better, you know, that's what we're doing. So it actually helps the overall system by having these updated weirs that we can control a lot better. And then also during the dry season, we keep them up, and it actually helps, you know, with keeping the whole system better off, dry and wet, when we have these updated systems. You see those pipes and all that? That's just totally non-functional at this time.
Okay. I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number J-11? Please do so at this time.
From the F section, I just walked in on this. I don't know anything about it. But what I do know is we had a lot of problems with the weir on Pine Lakes, the one near Pine Lakes Parkway and Beltair. We had extensive problems with that. I just want to make sure that we looked at that and that we don't have those same problems again.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Can you...
Yes, you know, we had a contractor that didn't build it correctly, and so, yes, he taught us well to make sure we watch that very closely, right, Mike? Yes.
Are we...
Well, we're well the problem.
Are we correcting it, or...
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's just the contractor did not do what he was supposed to do, and so we watch him a lot closer. We also know, we build, you know, how many of these did you say we've built? 19? 13?
We have built 19 since 2009, so we're pretty good at it.
And that was one of the first ones, so we've come a long way since then.
It wasn't the one with the contractor we just selected?
No, no. Contractor, the contractor that does low bid here, we've had very good luck with, excellent experience with this contractor.
SIG and Anbaxure has been doing our bridges lately, Colchester Drive Bridge, Colorado Drive Bridge. And I have to admit that Colchester Drive Bridge, after they got finished, is the only one we have with a 100% health index. So they did a really good job.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number 12, 13, 14, 15, or 16? Please do so at this time. Then I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number L? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I don't know if you noticed it, or maybe it's only in my neighborhood, but every time I drive down the streets, these piles keep getting bigger and bigger. Now, I don't know where it's coming from, you know, but you drive down and you get a pile of debris, and there's maybe two or three branches. You come back in the afternoon, and you got 12 branches. And you come back the next day, and you need a whole truckload. You better start picking this stuff up because you've been doing this for the rest of the year.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Georgia Mail, Palm Coast. Concerning the discussion you had on the commercial development on Metansus and Beltair from the church there, and the argument that Mr., or questioned Mr. Nobea last, entrances and egresses, I wonder if you could limit it to two, one on Metansus and one on Beltair, and not have one on Old Beltair, seeing the number of people that were here and left. I know they probably figured, okay, it's going in, but I think that would allay a lot of their fears if you would not have an exit or entrance on Old Beltair. I think that would help the neighborhood a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I know you're going to address the debris cleanup.
Yes.
So Jack, Mr. Landon has a very comprehensive discussion on debris cleanup, so we'll wait for his comments to address your issues. And as far as, I know that a lot of the residents that were here for the Metansus, they were actually here in support of the project. They were from the church, so I just wanted to clarify that. I've spoken to them before the meeting. And also, let me just also state, yeah, I think frankly, we're going to be able to come back regardless and have more detail when that does come for approval.
Yes, we'll have more detail, but I'm going to state right now, it's a lot safer to have access in and out of an area like this on an Old Beltair, which is fairly limited, versus a four-lane divided 45, 50 mile-an-hour traffic on Metansus. You always want the traffic to come in and out of that smaller street. Once again, though, there's no place for them to go. I mean, if they, they're not going to go to the neighborhood, just like we experienced on Pine Lakes. If you are coming in to that gas station, there's absolutely no need for you to go to the neighborhood, and people just don't do it. But it's a whole lot safer for overall traffic. But we will take a look at those details when we see what actually comes in. But just in general, we have to look at the overall safety of the area and make sure we do it correctly.
Okay. I will now move to agenda item number M, which is discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Shipley.
Well, you're going to bring up the debris, so that was one, because I'm...
Well, you're going to bring up the debris, so that was one, because I'm in the F section that isn't done yet. The other one is, I got an email over by the mobile station over by Pine Lakes that because there's a problem there with the drainage issue, the school bus stop has actually been affected, and the kids are over on the street over there. So I was wondering if we have any plans to do anything with the drainage over there. They said it was a problem before the hurricane.
We will take a look. I know we're looking at it. I haven't got a report back yet. I can tell you that the whole city has water where they're not used to having water right now, as we've talked about, but we'll see what we can do about that one.
The one thing I would like to say is, the city did a fantastic job supporting the Pink Army Run this weekend, Run Walk. That was great, seeing city staff out there, everybody was on top of their game, so thank you to everybody who participated in that.
Had an excellent turnout, too.
Yeah, almost 500 racers. That was incredible.
Great. That's all? Okay. Vice Mayor Nobiel? Councilmember Cuff?
Nothing other than the debris cleanup update. I'm looking at the red and blue on the map and anxious to hear what's going on.
Yeah, and those are similar to my comments. You know, I received a text early, early this morning. There were individuals over in a certain section. I know we've had a rain event. They could not get to work, and it's over on... And they sent pictures. It's bad, they can't get out of their driveway. 16 Weiss Place, so the W section.
Okay.
So I'm anxious to hear also, and I had a question. I know that some of these major rain events, and I know we do pump out and pump out some of the water in certain areas when we're trying to just reduce the flooding. Have we done that with our recent events to say we can rent some pumps and try to alleviate some of that in our residential neighborhoods?
Well, actually, what we pump out is our sewer system.
Well, yeah.
We don't pump out the drainage system. It all is a matter of flowing downhill. Mayor, as we've talked about before, the real problem is, is that there is no place to pump it to, because it's really being backed up from downstream. So even if you were to pump it out of one swell into a ditch, it's still just going to back up. So the good news is, is, for example, and I don't know this for a fact, but typically, that address you just gave me is probably fine right now. It just only takes a couple hours before it subsides. Now, with this, full is the overall system, and I'm talking about the natural system, everything we have out there, it's taking longer than it normally does. But that's just a matter of mother nature, as you've heard, more rain than we're used to. But the really good news, in my opinion, is that all of these events do not include any structural flooding. And as I describe as often as I can, flooding of the street is actually how the system's designed, and so it's inconvenient, maybe, but it's nothing like having your structure flooded. Also with that is, every time we get one of those, we go look at it, and if there is something that is blocking the flow, and that is the case sometimes, you know, when water flows down, there'll be a basketball that gets in a pipe or something, we will go and look and see if there isn't anything we can do to help. So, and we have, our inspectors are very busy right now doing that. The other thing that, since we're on that subject, and not debris yet, is that the other thing we're fighting is the high groundwater. And so the swells, everybody will say, well, my swell's not flowing. It may actually be flowing as designed, but it's being filled up from the bottom of the swell, and so it doesn't look like it's flowing because the groundwater keeps it that level. And there's nothing we can do about that. So keep sending us your addresses we see, pictures. We will take a look at them. Many of them, there's not a whole lot we can do right now. Just look at your ponds. They're all higher than normal. It's just how the system is right now.
We'll now move to discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
I do not want to delay the discussion of debris removal, so I have no report.
We appreciate that. Agenda item number O, discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Let me start off with the best news, and the best news is that our national contractor, one of them, the one that was here during Matthew, Crowder Gulf is in town. They actually showed up Friday with a couple of trucks. So with that, we opened up our site on US1, which helps expedite things because it's much quicker to dump there versus ELS. Also, with them in town, we've moved to a seven-day-a-week pickup schedule. These people are from out of town, and so they work every day to make the money and then go somewhere else. We have been told, we hope to have a couple more trucks from Crowder Gulf contractors. This weekend was, we moved a lot of debris. You go onto our website, and we actually have a box there that, about debris removal, and it will show you the progress we make every day, or on Mondays, it shows you the progress we made during the weekend. We have, I'd say, at this point, about half the community picked up, and it has gone much quicker now than what it was because we have, you know, to obtain additional resources. On Wednesday, we're stressing the Waste Pro to get the regular pickup going. Mr. Carroll talked about, well, the piles keep getting bigger. Some of that's just because, you know, just normal yard cleanup, yard maintenance, and people adding to it. Others is because they're just now picking up that tree that fell down, or the limbs, et cetera, and they put it out. In fact, some areas we've gone through once, and then we, people put out more debris. That's okay. That's not a complaint. It's just a fact of life that this is an ongoing weekly event. I can tell you that this is our highest priority. We meet on it every day. We talk to our contractors every day and are doing this as quickly as possible. City crews, we've got six of them now dedicated to it. We have enough equipment out there, and we have some of them even volunteer to work Sunday. So, once again, it is all hands on deck that we can do this efficiently. Our issue is not manpower, though, to tell you the truth, it's equipment, and it's tough to come by, but we keep working at it.
I have a question. So I think Crowder Gulf, they do everyone, all communities. So contractually, we have a list of FEMA-approved debris cleanup companies. How many are on that list? Is it just one, or is it a few?
I believe it's, is it two? Two or three?
Okay.
Mayor, in reality, once you give a notice proceed to one of them, the other ones won't come.
Okay. How that works?
Basically, how that works is that they, it's very difficult to get somebody else in here because of just the volume, and it's kind of just the way they operate. I will tell you that the Crowder Gulf trucks that we have came out of Flagler Beach, and that Flagler Beach with their house flooding, and, I mean, if you drove through some of their neighborhoods, it really was a priority, because that wasn't just yard debris, that was whole house, et cetera.
I say that because I know the Grand Haven CDD just changed their agreement to go with local contractors, in particular, 4C's being one of them, and I was wondering if in the future we could add them and try to give the work to locals first, them being closest to home?
We've contacted all locals. They've turned us down. Right now, they're all very busy, and they...
I'm not saying for this instance, I'm saying in the future.
Right. But I understand, but let me tell you why they turned us down. It's because when they're busy like they are right now, and they have their regular customers, they're not going to pull their crews off of those regular paying customer for the one-time event. When they weren't busy, they were very willing to do this, but it takes too long. You can go into one neighborhood like Grand Haven and get it cleaned up, but for the whole city, they would basically have to tell their customers, we can't, you know, be a month or two before we'll come to your job. They're not going to do that for a regular customer. We reach out to all of them, you know, Klein, 4C's, ELS, and, you know, they just aren't willing to come off of their regular jobs.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to think of ways where we can get this smoother in the future, and it's just frustrating, because I know when you're driving and you're seeing all this debris, it's...
We know.
Not pleasant.
Yes. Yes. Remer, sir.
Is it possible that we could go back to the regular schedule where they would pick up regular trash on a Monday, and then on a Wednesday, pick up the clippings? And then when the stuff is too big, that's when you call on the other people? That way, everyone gets a once around?
Right. Well, right now, we are on regular schedule, and on Wednesday, what we do is we give Waste Pro the map of everywhere we've been. So with the idea that you need to pick up everything on those streets, and they should be all within the limit. And then the other areas, pick up the bags and cans. And then if you have, get beyond that, then we go into the gated communities to help those areas. All of that that I just described is not FEMA reimbursable. The piles, the first pass out there is FEMA reimbursable. So there is a part of this that we have to manage correctly so that they're not picking up a pile that's non-FEMA reimbursable, one that is. And so, and that's why we, and then we have different equipment, and we have, you'll hear a complaint, well, they skipped my pile. Well, that's because we had the big claw truck, and your pile was too small, or we had a crew in there picking up the small stuff, and the claw truck is coming. But we're, that's all part of the managing of it. But we are trying to make sure that those areas, we've had the first pass, that we're going to pick up everything we can on a regular Wednesday.
That it for debris, or?
Cindy, do I have anything else? Sorry.
Food Truck Tuesday, yeah?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I have, Food Truck Tuesday is tonight. It starts at 5:00. Mayor, ex-Mayor, what time? You always are the first one there, I've been told, about, it starts at 5:00. Cindy's guaranteeing me there won't be any rain for that. We have Boo Bash, we're getting into Halloween events now. We have Boo Bash at Beltar Park on Friday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and then our very popular Hall of Terror, Monday and Tuesday, the 30th and 31st, at 7:00 PM, and that's at Fire Station 21. That's the one there next to Coles. And then lastly, from 5:00 to 8:00 is live music, Dolly Parton, Imagine Library, Imagination Library is a beneficiary. That's for Food Truck. Okay. So that, we got, for that, that's tonight. Okay. So those are the event that Cindy asked me to pass along to you also. That's all I have, Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
I walked over here, so...